Team, I understand.
Becky, are you ready? Tammy, are you ready?
Good morning, everyone. It is 9:00 AM. I will call the Monday, August 11th, 2025 meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. A couple of announcements. The Lincoln County Board of Commissioners reserves the right to enter closed session at any time as necessary to discuss the agenda item currently before the board. We also reserve the right to take agenda items out of order for the convenience of the parties involved. We will be following the Open Meeting Act with amendments, which is posted at the entrance to the room. At 9:15, we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, also following the Open Meeting Act with amendments. We will begin today's meeting with a prayer. Commissioner Woodruff, if you would do us the honors?
Yes, thank you. Please join me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the very plentiful rains that have replenished our soils. Thank you for the many blessings that we have received and that we enjoy, and the many freedoms that are ours to enjoy as well. Provide a special shield of armor to all those involved in law enforcement, military, both home and abroad, and the first responders that are so very important to our safety and the freedoms, securing the freedoms that we enjoy. Look after our group today as we meet, business of Lincoln County. Let us make decisions that are pleasing in your eye and to the benefit of all those in Lincoln County. These things we ask in Jesus's name.
Amen.
Amen. If you've all had an opportunity to review the minutes from last week's meeting, I would seek a motion.
Move to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting that was held August 4th, 2025.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Brens.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
The next item is approval of the claims and treasurers receipts.
Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the claims and treasure receipts as presented. And as always, if we find something inappropriate, that we can act on that separately at that time.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Moving on, we have received an order filed, the final report of distress warrants as submitted by the county treasurer.
Make a motion that we receive an order filed, the final report of distress warrants as submitted by the county treasurer.
Second.
Motion, second. And make a comment, they are very good looking as to what some of them were in the past. So, that's a good surprise.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Our next item is receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county sheriff, the county clerk, and the register of deeds.
Be my motion to receive an order filed, the fee reports submitted by the county sheriff in the amount of $6,673.13, county clerk in the amount of $1,025, and the register of deeds in the amount of $37,442.98.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Brens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
That's all right. It's all right.
We now have the appointment of Jason Schultz as the Lincoln County Title VI Coordinator.
Going to have a presentation from the appointee? One.
Is there anyone that would like to speak to this? Looks like pretty routine appointment, so...
In lieu of having a presentation by Mr. Schultz, I will make the motion that we appoint Jason Schultz to the Lincoln County Title VI Coordinator.
Second.
The resume, for me, I'm...
Very good. We have a motion to appoint Jason Schultz as the Lincoln County Title VI Coordinator and a second.
Yes.
Any discussion, questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Jason, for being willing to serve in that capacity.
This is one of those positions that's required by the government, federal government, for a lot of our grant applications, or grant awards, rather, and as most of them come through to the Roads Department, it makes sense for Tyler to serve in this capacity.
And I believe historically it has been the highway superintendent that is going to have that role for us, so with that, roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Now it comes up.
Now it'll come up.
Our next item is authorizing the chair to sign a right-of-way submitted by telecom communication for Lumen CenturyLink.
Morning. Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Good morning. Good morning, Jason.
Thanks for adding that title. This permit is for a bore underneath one of our roads. It's out off of Rolling Hills and Thunderhead area, so they're just simply born under the road to put in a service to residents there.
They didn't provide a map, but you are familiar with where this is at and...
Yeah. You...
Yeah, there isn't much of a map. Do you guys not have a map on the...
We don't have a map. So, Rolling Hills, if you go north of the airport and then back to the east, it turns and goes up. Rolling Hills is the main road, and Thunderhead goes back up into that subdivision there.
Yeah, most of it is on private, but it's just crossing our road there one time.
Is that a gravel road?
Yeah.
They're just going to one address, or is it for the entire?
That's my understanding, they're just going to that one there. I think it's, they already have existing going up there, but then they're just tying on and going to one more.
One.
Yeah.
Be my motion to authorize the chair to sign the permit to Occupy County right-of-way submitted by telecom construction for Lumen, also known as CenturyLink.
Second.
It looks like there is a fee in the amount of $201.50. Has that changed, Becky, that those aren't attached with the applications anymore? Because I do not. I don't have a check with it. Oh, okay. Okay. Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Brens.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Title VI Coordinator.
You might have to have that added to your nameplate on your desk.
Yeah, I guess so.
I'm sorry, my right shift alarm didn't, oh, my left shift alarm is doing that. I acknowledge it was not the chair's fault.
Thank you, Joe. I'm so glad you're willing to take the heat for that. We need to get Becky a new taser.
Thank you.
They make short handled ones now?
Yes, it is, for sure.
Sign them for payment.
It's, those are just corrections.
No, those are amendments to the numbers.
I see.
So, if you didn't sign the first one, you don't need to sign the second, you don't need to sign the original, because you weren't here. If your name's not on it, sign the second one.
Okay.
The one sheet put on with the paper, left, right, Becky?
The ones with the pink, the pink sticky notes?
You're just amending the numbers, right?
They are, yes.
Or they are, yeah. Got you.
It's only the 11.
What is going on here?
There, Becky said they amended them, so there was just a few.
I missed that at the beginning.
It is 9:15. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, following the Open Meeting Act, which is posted at the entrance to the room with amendments. Our first order of business for the Board of Equalization is to approve the minutes from last week's meeting.
Chair, I would move that we approve those minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on August 4th of 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Before us now is certificates of correction and refund submitted by the county assessor.
Good morning, Julie Stinger, Lincoln County Assessor. You have three of them this morning. They are all three personal property schedules. One of them is a business that sold on August 1st, so we are accelerating the 2025 personal property taxes on that one. And then, the other two is a ranch sold some property, and there were some pivots located on it, and those pivots were on a personal property schedule, so we are accelerating the personal property taxes on those two pivots as well. They're in different tax districts, so they were on two different schedules, but it's the same transaction for the sale of those pivots.
Very good. Our first one appears to be from ABC Auto Salvage. That's the business that sold. This is for the personal property taxes for 2025, value at the 2024 levy, for a total of $97. The next one is Deepwater Ranch in the amount of $3,253.38, and this is an acceleration of 2025 personal property taxes. And they are also the second personal property tax acceleration for Deepwater Ranch in the amount of $1,172.64. I would seek a motion for approval.
Make a motion, we approve the remotes and authorize the chair to...
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Next, we have the notice of valuation change number 2025-024 is submitted by the county assessor.
This is going to be a boundary line agreement that was filed clear back in 1973 that apparently never reached the assessor's office. We couldn't find any notes on any of the information going back. This particular lady is selling her property, and I think she knew maybe there wasn't quite the 140 acres there that we had on the property record card, so her and her realtor did some, checking into some stuff. I think Bonnie Edwards actually filed a survey that was with that boundary line agreement back, the survey didn't get filed until 1988, or '86 it looks like, but the boundary line agreement was filed in 1973. So, after looking at the information and doing the correction, because she is going to sell the property, we decided to go ahead and do this county board change for this year to get it. A lot of times we wait till the following year since it's after certification, but...
So, Bonnie did a survey here lately, because in '86 she wasn't there.
She, yeah, I don't know that she, she didn't really do the survey, but she found it and looked it over and agrees and verified it and refiled this with the registered deeds office, so there would be a copy of it on record and on file.
Okay, so it probably maybe just didn't get filed by the registered deeds.
Yeah, I think it maybe got at the survey, the surveyor's registry, but not at the registered deeds office, so. So, that would be correcting these acres from 140.71 to 105.03 for that boundary line agreement and survey that was recently filed.
Be my motion to approve the valuation change number 2025-024, identified as parcel 80570.00.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion?
This individual had been paying taxes on that extra property for some time then, huh?
Feels to be that way.
Yeah.
She, possibly, because they did do some asking questions, she may appear in front of you guys to request, I think they can go back three years.
Three years.
And I don't know if this would be considered one where we're correcting it for this year since it's already been certified, that I guess we'd have to do some checking on, but...
We have processes in place to prevent this from happening currently, right?
Well, I mean, we do the best we can. I mean... I mean, you know, we've told everything, you know, that gets filed at the deeds office now to please give it to us.
Yeah.
And then we can sort through whether we need it or not, because I know sometimes there's stuff that's filed, but they didn't think we needed it, so we didn't get it. I mean, in the past, but I mean, we've kind of got that agreement with the deeds office now. Sometimes though, like Joe.
And sometimes they don't get filed.
They, yes.
Even yet.
They will file those surveys with the surveyor's office in Lincoln, the state surveyor's office, not realizing that they should be filed here at the deeds office. Because if they're not filed here, we have no way knowing that survey was done.
So the surveyor's office in Lincoln doesn't send a report? Interesting.
Not to us, anyway. I don't know about the deeds, but I would assume they don't, otherwise I think the deeds would notify us as well, but.
Can we request a report, like on a, like twice a year or once a year?
I guess I don't know. I haven't.
I just want to make sure we're doing everything we can to, you know, mitigate people having to pay more taxes than what they should. I mean, ultimately, it's the responsibility of the landowner, but a lot of people don't know what they don't know, so.
Yeah.
They turn something into government office, I think, probably assuming that.
I know, you know, I think there was, back in the day, a lot of boundary line agreements filed, especially down through the accretions that I don't know that the deeds office realized. I mean, and I don't think it's anybody's fault down there, but you know, that they didn't get to our office. So there's, we are seeing some of them kind of come to light now as property sells and changes and they realize that, oh, you know, maybe that's not the acres I thought I had and stuff, so.
Certainly hope that she does come in front of us.
Yeah. It sounds like a good way for something to fall through the cracks. Would you check on that to see if you could get a report? Would it be appropriate for the report to go to your office or to the register of deeds office?
You know, it might not hurt for both of us. I mean, we can certainly get it and get copies in our office, but you know, I think the registered deeds office, they almost require everything there to be, to be a legal document to be filed for them. So now whether, they might send them the report, but I don't know if the registered deeds office could do it unless somebody actually come in and filed and paid the doc stamps and stuff on it, but.
Oh, I see.
I mean, you know, because sometimes, you know, just a survey doesn't necessarily convey ownership. So that's why they require that 521, because you could have your fence line surveyed and file it. But if you don't own what's inside that fence line, you know, it's not actually a legal document. Or we gotta make some adjustments. You have to have an agreement with Chris and change that boundary line, do a boundary line agreement or, you know, he's going to pay you for some of that that you're legal.
Stay on your own side of the line, right here. There's my line.
That's where we run into issues, you know, fence lines or roads, everybody thinks was a section line and, you know, and it was not a lot of the times. So, that being said, like I said, in order for Lois to have it and be a legal document, I think somebody would have to actually file something through.
I see, so a little more complicated.
A little bit more complicated. I mean, we could look at the surveys, but still, unless we really think it was a survey of what they actually really, we would look at the deed that was filed to make sure that that's what they actually owned. In this case, there was a boundary line agreement that was filed, so it wasn't easy fix with that.
I, I would have to believe that these would be few and far between.
Yes, I would hope so.
And if nothing else, a report would give us a point of inquiry that we could, we could follow.
Yeah, I will contact the survey's office and see if we can get one of them.
Very good. Follow up with us after you get a response, that'd be great.
Okay, yep.
All right. Good, good discussion. I learn something in this room every day, or every Monday.
It'd be my motion that we approve the notice of valuation change number 2025.
I believe we already have a motion on the floor, yeah.
We already do.
Good to go. I guess we're discussed.
Yeah, that was our discussion. So with that, roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Brunns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
We don't usually discuss stuff like that that long. I kind of forgot about it too. Thanks, Julie. It is 9:26. We will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Our next agenda item is at 9:30. It is 9:30. The item before us is discuss and consider special designated liquor permit submitted by TBS Liquors, North Platte LLC, for a wedding reception at Cottonwood Springs venue on September 13th, 2025. Good morning.
Good morning.
If you would like to sign in on the clipboard and then announce your name for the record.
Absolutely. I'm Kim Heff. And I'm owner of the bottle shop, TBS Liquors.
Jim, where, where is the event taking place?
It's Cottonwood Springs. It's south of Maxwell. The address is on here. It's on, right off of East State Farm Road.
For the record, it looks like that is 17863 East State Farm Road, Maxwell, Nebraska. This is for a wedding reception.
It's about a mile back west from where the Plainview Cemetery is.
Yeah, yeah.
North side of the road.
Yeah, I've been there a couple of times. I can drive to it, but I'm not good at describing where it's at, but.
And you guys have a caterers?
We do. We have an endorsement on our liquor license at the bottle shop.
Very good.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Very good.
So I see that you are providing two security members from your organization?
Yeah, we've got, we've got two. Nate, Nate Hawks, who's my partner's brother. And then my son from Carney is coming up to do security.
And are you doing wristbands or?
No.
Just checking IDs?
No, we'll, we'll check IDs. We, all of our bartenders and liquor store cashiers go through the safe serve class.
Okay.
So we'll have our scanner there for our IDs as well as they need to check them. The, uh, security, just because of the way it's laid out, if you saw in our diagram, we're only going to fence off the, it would be the west and the north side, and then use the actual building as the other barrier there for fencing off. And all that parking sits to the south of that. And I believe after 100 people, you at least have to have one security. But because that parking sits to the south and that's open, that always gets you concerned. So we'll have people walk in the parking, parking lot there and making sure there's not anyone sneaking their own stuff in, so.
Nate also works in a liquor establishment.
He does.
So he knows the.
Yeah, yeah.
And that outdoor space, you provide the fencing for that, is that correct?
We, we are. We're going to provide the main part of the fencing, but if, I have pictures if you want to see it. The venue itself has posts that actually line the whole cemented area back there. So we're going to use their posts in our fencing.
I see.
On that.
But it will be fenced?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you guys normally use wristbands when you do events like this?
We, everything that we've done has been mostly private. We've done, so I've worked SDLs out of Hastings and Adams County and Buffalo County for weddings before. We've done Remus's Business After Hours. We have used wristbands. We did a street dance down here for a car show once, and we used wristband there when it wasn't an invited event, I guess, but.
But not usually at invited events?
Not usually, if it's a private event.
Makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, it does make sense. Very good. Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate it. With that, I would seek a motion for.
Chair, I would make the motion that we approve and recommend the special designated liquor permit submitted by TBS Liquors, North Platte LLC, for a wedding reception at Cottonwood Springs venue on September 13th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I do have a check attached to the application for $40. No other discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Brunns.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Thank you, Kim. Wish you a safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, they have them. I don't know if you want to get it.
They already have them.
Yeah.
It is 9:40. At this time, it is our privilege and honor to recognize National Emergency Management Awareness Month. With that, Brandon, if you'd like to bring your group up? And if we'd all like to come out? Do you want to just gather out there and we come stand around you for the?
You tell us how you want.
Presentation? Let's do that. If my fellow commissioners would like to join us? I will just say, I think everyone in Lincoln County, or maybe everyone in Lincoln County doesn't realize how much we rely on Brandon Myers and his team, Joanna and Pam. Also, you have another employee that's missing. Okay, so Kyle, that 24/7, you guys are looking out for Lincoln County. I get messages frequently. I think every chair has. It can be 3 o'clock in the morning or 3 o'clock on a Sunday afternoon when Brandon and his group are looking out for Lincoln County and beyond. You also serve other counties around us. So with that, I would like to read the proclamation. Whereas the safety and well-being of our residents is of paramount importance and communities across the nation face a growing number of natural and human-made hazards, including wildfires, hurricanes, floods, extreme heat, cyber threats, and public health emergencies. And whereas emergency management professionals at the. And whereas emergency management professionals at the local, state, tribal, and federal levels work year-round to prepare for, respond to, recover from, and mitigate disasters often behind the scenes and under challenging conditions. And whereas, a resilient community depends not only on the efforts of emergency management professionals, but also on the preparedness and cooperation of all citizens, organizations, and businesses. And whereas, raising public awareness about emergency preparedness, promoting disaster readiness education, and encouraging individuals and families to take proactive steps, such as creating emergency kits, developing family communication plans, and staying informed are essential to reducing risk and saving lives. And whereas, recognizing August as National Emergency Management Awareness Month provides an important opportunity to honor the dedicated professionals in emergency services and to educate the public on how to prepare for emergencies of all kinds. Now therefore, I, Michaela Luler, Chairwoman of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners of North Platte, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim August twenty twenty-five as National Emergency Management Awareness Month. I urge all citizens to join in recognizing the vital work and emergency management professionals and to take steps to ensure they and their loved ones are prepared in the event of a disaster. So, thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
I really appreciate you and all of the people that help you out. So, there, I'll let you hold that up.
All right, one, two, three.
Very good. Brandon, if you'd like to just say a few words to your, the work that you do and the people that help you the most.
Really for emergency management, um, having volunteers, having staff to help is vital. So, uh, like having Joanna and Pam down in Dundee, Kyle that's in Hitchcock, helping, uh, watch things, facilitate things. And then volunteers, uh, our cert team, Community Emergency Response Team, our Medical Reserve Corps, those are what we rely on. So, all the volunteers will be definitely able to do the job and keep everybody safe.
And I know that you work, um, very closely with fire, rescue.
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement, the railroad, um, has a big part in, um, what you guys do. So, thank you, I really appreciate you guys. Um, I know the county depends heavily on the work that you guys do. And I will say, that was, uh, I will say, Brandon, that, um, when you're not available and these employees step up and fill your shoes, you've done a great job in, in training them. I've had the pleasure of spending lots of hours in the command center with Joanna, and she does a good job in filling that area of responsibility. So, thank you all for the work that you do.
Thank you very much.
That happens a lot. Oh, yeah, 'cause it says that on here, I should have.
It is nine fifty. The item before us is discuss and consider authorizing the chair to execute the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six labor agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Number Twenty-Six. Do we have committee members that would like to speak to this?
Yes. Again, I served on that committee and I can say that I think it was, uh, very good negotiations both ways. Fair negotiations. It'll be a one-year contract, as we mentioned. I appreciate the willingness of the FOP to negotiate in good faith, and I think that we came out with an agreement that both sides can be feel good about.
Yeah, you summed it up very nicely. They, uh, they were very amicable to work with and, uh, the local representation's typically that way. We, we agree to disagree occasionally, but it's always, uh, it's always on a congenial basis.
As it should be, so I'm not surprised to hear that. Uh, it, it's a pretty thick agreement. Um, I know a lot of work went into it from all parties involved.
I, I think what happens is, um, there's probably three or four, maybe five items, key items that we, uh, think like at negotiation time will come up. But, uh, the majority of that agreement, uh, the language will remain the same. Uh, a lot of policies and procedures, you know, that the sheriff, uh, has to do with also. So, yeah, I think that, uh, the key items, we got, got handled well.
Do you feel like there's any significant changes anywhere that you'd like to highlight? Or it's just pretty standard with, uh, some updates here and there?
It's standard with some updates. Um, I don't think there's any, uh, earth-shaking things that are any different this year, other than just being the one-year contract, and we'll, uh, we'll address that again next year.
In the past, has it normally been a longer agreement?
Two years.
Two?
In recent times.
I was gonna say, I used up my allocated time, so I kept.
Typically, try to get a two-year agreement, uh, and that's usually based on the cost of living recognized at the Kansas City, uh, index, uh, since I've been involved with it. But they opted not to do that this year, that, uh, so we'll just readdress it next year.
Very good. Thank you so much for that feedback. Um, if someone is ready to make a motion?
I would make the motion that we, uh, authorize the chair to sign and execute the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six labor agreement with Fraternal Order of Police, FOP Twenty-Six. Oh, we do, okay.
Second, does the sheriff have anything to say?
Very good, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Very good, our next agenda item is at ten AM.
Last one was Miller Repair, Miller Tire, Grand Island. I needed to see two Millers in a row, they're different businesses. I like seeing Vessner better or.
The other one was Menards, maybe we're sorting them by alphabetical order now. Becky didn't hear that.
We forgot the N, the word O and P now, so it might be.
It might be alphabetical.
You gotta be kidding me. You know what? I swear, every one of these are alphabetical, out of the next six or seven, B or S.
They probably aren't, they all came from their own department, so, probably filed them that way.
They probably won't get them back that way after they make their way around here.
Uh-huh, no, they're in order.
No, there is actually one doing.
Alphabetical and numerical?
Mm-hmm, Chris is helping.
You guys are awesome.
Problem is in this area.
Yeah.
Hey, 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 hey.
Speaking of which.
Gotta give you guys something to do to keep you out of trouble over there. Maybe I asked a little too many of them. It is ten AM. The agenda item before us is discuss resolution addressing rules and regulations for Lincoln County Board meetings. I believe this was an agenda item that we've been kicking around for, for, since last year, that just hasn't, uh, been put on the agenda and discussed, so.
Kinda just kick it now.
Commissioner Hughley and Commissioner Brunz are on the Rules Committee, and so I'm gonna let you guys take the conversation from here.
I think what you have before you is a very first start at, um, an attempt to try to get some organization to the group, okay, when it comes to our rules and regulations as far as having meetings. I don't think, was the attempt of the Rules Committee to say this is a final document, it's a working document, and, and I is going to assume that it's going to continue to evolve and grow throughout the year or years as we go forward. I would hope that each, everyone would have had a chance to look at this and write in any additional comments they think might be appropriate to have in here, uh, suggest striking some language, uh, but just make an attempt to try to get something started and then have a discussion for all of our input as to what else might be included. Chris?
You summed it up quite well.
So, Commissioners, is the intent for, um, conversation to happen here today? Or do you? Or do you want us to?
I defer that to the board. I'm just a worker bee.
Tammy did send the document out to all of us last week. I had an opportunity yesterday to go through it and do have some highlights. I mean, it looks like pretty good rules for the most part. There were some things that I didn't know that applied necessarily to us. And there are a couple of additions that I'd like to see.
I don't think it's a good time to discuss it right now.
I can forward my suggestions to the committee, to one of you? Or would you like it discussed now?
This is a discussion. I mean, we're not discussing everything, so I think now is no free time.
All right. So I'm, Chris, I know that last year before you were on the Rules Committee, you had had some things you wanted to see, so I'll let you start with yours.
Well, so this just really, what this does more than anything, at least what's in this draft, is it adds some things to the agenda. I think that's gonna be the most impact based on what's in this language as far as the way the board really conducts our meetings. There's not a whole lot of changes in this. Still Roberts Rules of Order, a loose adaptation. But there are some things in here that would be required on the agenda, such as a public comment time. That would bring us in line with the Open Meetings Act, something that I've wanted to see for a while. There would be things on here as far as next meeting, date and time would be required on the agenda. Other than that, there's not a whole lot of significant changes to the way we're already conducting business. So there's a couple of things in here that I do think that probably we need to take out simply because it becomes, or at least I would have a question and want a little bit more explanation regarding the conflicts of interest. I think that...
What page are we on, Chris?
Page nine. Where we have, and I'm fine having a more rigorous aspect. I always err on that side. But I think that there's gonna be some things that we just particularly as board members, as Commissioners, need to pay attention to. Number two, under conflicts of interest, like that would entail our mileage to regular meetings. That stuff would need to be taken out. I, backing up just a moment, another change, the agenda that this document does is it creates a consent agenda. And so that's...
Which I don't like at all.
And I would tend to agree with you on that.
Let's scratch that. That's three of us.
So where's that at?
It's page three.
Oh, look, I have it highlighted. Yeah, I don't, I agree with Commissioner Weems. I don't like the consent items that it discusses.
So that's that full number two, right? Second paragraph? First full paragraph on page three, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
I'm just gonna put a big X through that.
Didn't mean to interrupt you, Chris. On your conflict of, or, excuse me, jumping back to the public hearing, I almost think spelling all that out a little bit.
See, on page eight, right?
Page eight. I guess if you wanna, if whoever's chair at the time wants this template to keep them on track, I think that's great. But I don't know that you necessarily wanna pigeonhole yourself to identifying who speaks first, second, third, because folks in the public are nervous about speaking in public typically. And they may not hear that it's their turn to raise their hand. So that's not gonna help the public engage. That's gonna be counterproductive to that. So I wouldn't have any of that language for...
Point well taken. Thank you.
From the, this part here.
Public hearing, items one through seven, you know, your item. I mean, if you, if you wanna take some of these things and put them into a template and say, okay, here, you're the new chair. Here's some things to help you through your public hearing process so that we don't trip up on the legal, the legality and forget to speak or enter something into the record and those kind of things. If Tyler's not there to catch it and correct us, that's great. But I don't know that you necessarily need it in this kind of a document where you say, oops, well, we screwed up because we didn't let this guy speak in his turn or he's no longer, now can voices...
Actually, that's what I did is I took our 10-foot firm before that you're talking about, that we have, and I just put it into language, but that's a good point so that we don't pigeonhole ourselves, so I'm all for that.
I would say something like that. Each time you're schooling somebody to serve as chair, this would be one of the things, oh, here, under public hearings, here's a guideline for you. But just a guideline. And then proceed that way, not put it into a document.
So should we take the whole public hearing thing out? I don't have any problem. I mean, and use that as a template?
How about line four where it talks about those would be conducted during the Tuesday meetings?
What's that, Jerry?
Line four under public hearing?
Well, that was me.
That was a...
It's not. That was me missing, changing Tuesday to Monday.
Oh, okay, okay.
So this was a template that other counties use? And so there's little, little things like that that I have highlighted. And Tammy, I sent that email to you. None of it's a big deal.
And do we still have our thing that we had in the past from our conducting public hearing? I'm assuming we do.
So I know from experience, because when I became chair this year, I went to Tyler before our first public hearing and he gave me an incredibly detailed document that he developed to use for a public hearing. So I know that we have one that Tyler can share every year with the new chair.
I don't know that we necessarily should scratch the entire public hearings section. I think that it just needs to be retooled as far as the language sits in this draft.
I would support that.
Shall be offered in the guideline?
Yeah, something along those lines.
There were a couple of different places that I highlighted where it addresses notifying of task force and advisory committee meetings. I don't believe that that really applies to us.
It does. We have task force from time to time, like when we had the explosion at the rail yard. We had the task force that Joe and I worked on and we provided a final report to the board.
But the, so it says committees. That doesn't define our committees that we're all on.
Subcommittee's are different than advisory committees. Advisory committees include the Planning Commission. It includes our Safety Committee, as outlined by state statute that we have to have.
So when our Safety Committee gathers, they do publish notice of their meetings? I did not know that. Thank you. All right, I'll take that out.
Can we go back to conflict of interest? Is that something that needs changed in there?
One thing that's not in here are, and hopefully we will have this discussion today, and that is attending other meetings at a majority of the board. And so that specifically is not in here.
It is in here.
Oh, it is? And, where... Hopefully I didn't say something I didn't wanna say.
I don't think that's addressing other meetings, Chris. I think that's addressing our meetings, but...
No, it talks about...
It's on page five, quorum and chair. Three, so quorum and chair, except for otherwise provided by statute, three Commissioners constitute a quorum for the conduct of business.
For the conduct of business. That is... That, I mean, that addresses any time that three Commissioners are together. It establishes a quorum.
Well, but that's not, that is not, that is not necessarily true, I don't believe. I know we've had discussed about that, but then if we're a quorum, then we would not have been able to attend our last thing that we had on our planning and zoning.
The open, the open house for our comp plan.
That's what I was trying to say, our, you know, our open meetings. When is it a... And I just don't think that's the intent of this Board or any Board. I think that we have to stay educated.
So it goes on to finish. If you read the entire language there, it says, "If a quorum is not present for a meeting, the chair, in the chair's discretion, may cancel the meeting." I guess it was my interpretation that that is talking about our meetings, not other entities' meetings.
But actually...
That's just my interpretation.
And I'm not even sure that that is right. And I'm guessing that maybe we need to weigh in on that also. You know, when you're less than 10 or 12 people and Roberts doesn't apply, yada, yada, yada. Some of these small rules things that says shall be, but that almost sounds like a state statute thing when it comes to quorum because I know you cannot conduct a meeting of our Board unless you have a quorum. However, there are other public bodies that will have a... And it's not an official meeting, but they'll stay when there's less than a quorum and have a discussion. Now, I don't think that's necessarily right, but I thought maybe that would put some teeth to that because if we don't have three members here, we don't have a meeting.
Right.
And I don't think we should by law have a meeting.
It's already defined by law. We can't have a meeting. So I don't, that's like a foregone conclusion that you're not gonna have a meeting. Can we jump back to the conflict of interest thing? Tammy, to your point, to your question, item two says, "One motion and vote to pay on all claims." Okay, but if you are paying yourself, vote to separate the bills and abstain on your bill. Like mileage? Are we gonna be that nitpicky? You're gonna worry about mileage?
Well, that's paying yourself. That's where I had the point of question on. I think that that needs further discussion.
Well, to steal a phrase of someone else, it's kinda like a solution in search of a problem. We don't have a problem. I mean, it just, I don't know.
And on that one, I didn't know because on...
You're making payroll every month and you're on there too. So how do you do that? Separate us all out and vote on those separately? I don't see the, I don't see, I don't see a problem.
That's why I'd like number two stricken, which was my original point.
That was your original point, to strike it? Okay, so we're, I'm preaching to the choir then. Okay.
And then I just need clarification, number six. We do that through the NADC as required by state statute every year.
Right. That has to be filed.
So I'm just clarifying that that financial interest statement is the NADC form.
But there again, why do we need that in the conflict of interest where we're filing that each year with the state? I guess I'm not following.
Is there somewhere that says we do that every year, right?
Oh, yeah.
I know, but I mean, it's statute.
Yes, yes, sir.
So...
Yes, sir, there is. Because Becky's kind enough to remind us, dummies, every year, hey, dummy, you didn't, you didn't give me a copy of your financial statement. Whoops.
You don't necessarily have to file one, maybe that's just easier.
No, but it's sure a blessing that you're there to remind some of us that don't always think about it.
So I would, I think number six should be stricken because it's already something that's required by state statute. And then I have major questions on number seven. You can't adopt or correct a treasurer's report. You only adopt the annual report of the auditor. Well, we get a condition of the treasury on a fairly regular basis.
Every six months, don't we?
It's required by law for us.
Exactly. So that's in, that's in conflict to state statute, so number seven needs to be...
Okay, so let's understand that. You can't adopt or correct a treasurer's report. You can only adopt an annual report of the auditor. And we're saying we do the correction, the condition of the treasury every six months. So what I have right there is a conflict from what I'm hearing. So, strike it.
Number seven needs to be stricken because it's in conflict with state statute is what my point is.
Is there consensus on striking both number six and number seven?
Yes.
I would concur.
Have we, have we addressed the public comment section of our meeting yet?
No, not fully. That was also on my list, Chris. I believe out of last year's legislation, there was language that addressed specifying public comment period and having it defined on our agenda.
Whether it be top or bottom.
Right. So we need just to have discussion on, I mean, I've asked a lot of questions about that. Our routine is if we have an agenda item and there's somebody here that wants to speak at it, we have them speak at it during that time. I know some of the communities around us whose meetings I attend, some of them put it at the front of their meeting and there's a comment period at the beginning. Some of them have put it partway through and some have put it at the end. So there's a lot of options. But I do feel like we need to at least define it on our agenda so the public knows that they will be offered an opportunity.
And so as not to... Where are you specific, oh, I think I've got it seven. Thank you.
And so as not to complicate the agenda and the flow of doing business, it would seem to me to make sense right there somewhere after closed session, committee reports, heads and that sort of thing. That would be a reason, because there may not be anyone. So why set up 20, 30 minutes at the start of a meeting when you may not use it?
So some of the feedback I have been given is, you know, people want an opportunity to speak to what we're talking about, when we're talking about it. They don't wanna address it at the beginning. They don't, you know, if we've already had discussion and taken a vote, then it's a closed issue by the time we get to it if it's at the end of the agenda.
I don't...
I think we, I think we've all done that. If there was a specific item and someone was sitting in the room, out of courtesy, we invited them up. This is a, this is a whole different section in my opinion.
This is a whole different section that allows, they may wanna address the board on something that's not on the agenda and that needs to be provided at specific time per the Open Meetings Act. Now, I think that we always have and we should maintain that the chair has discretion to invite anybody up for a particular agenda item.
Then let's put that in here.
Then let's put it, let's spell that, both of them out on the agenda. I don't think it should be left to assume. I would, I would prefer. So are you saying at the beginning of the meeting, you would like a public comment opportunity? And then we put it in the instruction that we read that we will also afford people the opportunity to talk during individual agenda items?
Tyler, can you refresh my memory on what that new legislation said about...
The nickel tour of the legislation is you have to allow them to speak, period. You can put reasonable rules on it, that's fine. You don't have to let them meander for 30 minutes on nothing, but you have to give them an opportunity to speak.
So you just put a public comment line item?
Yep. At a specific time?
That will satisfy that piece of legislation. There's nothing in it that says that individuals in the audience who might have something to add to the conversation can't, again, speak or speak at that point in time.
You're not limiting public comment to just that period of time.
If you're gonna have something in there regarding that, you could segue into, chair reserves the right to allow an individual to speak on any line item, item on the agenda at their discretion at that time. And that could be in addition to statutory requirement to identify public time at 9:20 or 9:30 or...
Correct. And that was my request, was to have both of them spelled out because I've had people call me and say, there is no public comment period defined on your agenda. So I, I think if we just define one... So I, I think if we just define one and don't put in the instruction that it'll also be allowed during each individual agenda item, that people are gonna think it's only that one time period.
I don't disagree with you.
Okay.
My point is we just need to have something specifically annotated on the agenda for public comment.
Yes, I think we're both in agreement with that. We're saying the same thing. Okay.
So on items on the agenda, do we wanna leave this in here in language for our board, you know, five minutes? Do we wanna keep that at the discretion of the chair because if not, we're kinda opening ourselves up?
I think that is spelled out in here, Joe. I don't remember where, but I think it is limited to-
Oh, it's an honor thing.
To three minutes.
Each speaker is limited to one appearance up to five minutes.
And that can be extended as stated, as needed?
Yes.
That's the chair's discretion. That makes sense.
Yeah, I would err on the caution of less time extended at the discretion. That way you're not pigeonholed in.
Blocking out time that's not utilized.
Well, for someone having a longer than necessary form to talk about something that may or may not be all that present.
Yeah, in the sentence that says time limits may be extended or reasonably decreased at the discretion of the chair takes care of that, so.
Right. So what was the decision on the defined public comment period? Beginning of the meeting, end of the meeting, middle of the meeting?
I-
If you have to define it under the statute, I would say early.
I would too.
Because otherwise you're not doing the public a favor by making them sit through the entire meeting to speak to whatever issue they have.
Agreed.
I agree.
So.
Nine twenty, nine thirty somewhere near?
If you, if you put it early, but the chair still has, it's still identified the chair has the right to allow somebody to speak that didn't get here at nine twenty or nine thirty or wherever that's been identified, they can still allow that person to speak at their discretion. You don't wanna, you don't wanna, again, you don't wanna pigeonhole yourselves.
I would, my personal opinion is right after prayer.
I think some are early in the process because the, again-
I agree.
Folks will retake action.
Folks wanna come in and they wanna speak to something. They don't wanna wait for two hours.
That'd be reasonable.
That's where Hershey put theirs and people really seem to appreciate having it early in the meeting. That way if there's something, you know, they wanna address and then move on, not stay for the rest of the meeting, they appreciate that. So I would say yes, early in the meeting.
And then a simple note, in addition to the notes that we already have, with regard to, you know, reserving the right to take agenda items out of order, we could add another one at the discretion of the chair. The public may also speak on particular agenda items.
And give yourself latitude. Don't pigeonhole us into being compelled to do it that way every time.
So you're, Chris, you're recommending between one or two, between prayer and approving the agenda?
Before approving minutes, yes. Between-
I mean approving.
Between one and two.
Okay.
A standing public comment.
Okay.
Section. And then on our normal agenda, we have the few notes that the chair reads to the public annotating there that public may also speak at the discretion of the chair on a particular agenda item.
So add that up here or after, right there? Okay.
And then just have it here articulated in here.
So you want on the agenda as well as related documents?
After the, the underlined blue highlights at the beginning?
Exactly.
So also up in there in blue, we're gonna put they can speak at another time at the discretion of the chair.
Like the Ohio State Commission. There is a sentence in here that, and again, this is a draft that we got from other counties. But I do think that we need to discuss it. And since the sheriff is in the room, it's probably appropriate.
Where are we looking, Chris?
On page four, in section five, it's the second paragraph, or the second to last paragraph, rather. We've never had a problem with the request, but this clearly articulates it. The Lincoln County Sheriff or his designee shall serve as sergeant of arms for all meetings of the boards if requested by the chair.
Call me, I'll be right with you.
Exactly. I'm just giving you the due respect that because it is in here and it does involve you.
I do believe there have been a few times in our years around this table that we have asked for the sheriff to be present and it's always worked.
Exactly.
So.
For his designee?
On, speaking of page four, right above that section, I have highlighted during, about voting, it says, the records shall state how each member voted. It addresses a short sentence saying, provided that the vote to elect leadership with any of the, within any of the boards may be taken by secret ballot. I don't think that any of our votes should be done by secret ballot. I think everything should be transparent and public. And I don't think that that's a necessary sentence in here.
I agree.
Yeah.
Do we have an agreement to strike that sentence?
Which page are we on?
Page four, right.
Third paragraph on section, or third section.
Under conduct of meetings.
Hmm, okay.
Almost the third sentence or the third paragraph from the end. Um, I would like to go back also. Joe brought up the open meeting act.
Now, oh, let's go back, let's go back to this because that one I remembered. I gave some thought to that. Let me think about that. It doesn't say will be, it says maybe. And I'm trying to think that there was something that came up. And it may, I don't know if it was something that came out of legislature this year or something, but I think it was when they were trying to get an exec committee. And anyway, I thought, having that language in there, maybe we, I only wanted to say if something happens and we can't, I don't know. Anyway, if we feel it should be stricken, let's just strike it. But for some reason or another, I stuck the word may in there. But I have no problem if we were to just strike that may and just get rid of it and say it's by open period. That's, I'm totally good with that. So is that what we're hoping, wanting to do, right? Okay.
For me personally, I can't think of one situation where I would be bashful about letting my vote for something be known.
That's fine. Okay. Provided the vote for leadership, so we're not taking that, I'm just gonna take the thing out, provided that the vote for leadership within any of the boards may be, I'm just gonna scratch that whole thing, right?
Right after that semicolon, yeah.
Right. Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
All right. Are you ready to go back to open meetings?
Yes, ma'am.
Joe brought it up. We never really finished the discussion. With attending other organizations' meetings, this isn't, for me, it's not about our meetings here. It's going to, for example, the N-Corp meeting that was earlier this year or-
Or planning and zoning.
Planning and, yeah, the, the comp plan, open house. I've attended several meetings that were sponsored by NACO and NPZA that clearly define that it is allowable as long as we are not sitting all together and having discussion, making policy or decisions that should be happening around this table. And there's been a couple of times here locally in the last year or two years where it's not being applied consistently or evenly. And I feel like it's a discussion that we need to have and a decision made and that needs to be defined in our rules.
So my opinion would be like the N-Corp thing, in my opinion, that falls under a chance meeting, which is allowed underneath the Open Meetings Act. When it comes to meetings that we have a committee that serves on, it should be, I mean, if we have a committee that is serving on a particular function, whether it be the inland port, whether it be planning and zoning, like going to any of those workshops that we have, those smaller meetings with, you know, Judy and Tyler and we're discussing things in a specific workshop, that should be just the committee. Otherwise, because we're bringing all that stuff back to the board for consideration.
But how about, how does that, I, I think I understand, I think I understand what you're saying, Chris. It gets to be gray when we look at our last meeting where we had the presentation on the comp plan, including planning and zoning. Because I got information there probably, well, yeah, I did actually. I had information provided because it was out in the hall that I read in the deal under the second presentation credit that I didn't have earlier. And I did get, I did receive information there. How is that different? I mean-
And how could that be a chance meeting when it was advertised in public?
It wasn't.
Like all the other meetings are advertised and published. I, I feel like we're not being consistent in how that is being interpreted and applied. For instance, with planning and zoning, Chris, you said, you know, the workshops. Any, any county commissioner can register for the NPZA.
I'm not talking about going to a conference. I'm talking about the meetings that we have, our little workshop meetings that we hold in the city hall conference room where we're discussing specific items of the comp plan. That should be limited to two, not three. And that information is then brought back to the board.
But tho- those aren't public meetings that are published and have a, have a notice.
I'm saying that there's a difference that-
Right.
We can't just, we can't meet in a quorum capacity for things like that. State, state law doesn't allow us to.
Well, that's not the information that the attorney general presented at the NACO workshop. We have the slides. I, I've talked to multiple organizations, including NACO attorneys for their opinion. And their opinion is that it does not constitute a quorum, that, you know, we should be able to go. I mean, let's use the inland port as an example. They have their own board. We don't have decision-making powers. The only decision-making power we have with the inland port is we appoint who's on their board.
That is not true. That is not true anymore because we established an operating agreement where anything dealing with that property that they're going to be discussing at that board is gonna come before us for final approval.
So I know Commissioner Hugley, you checked with John Cannon on that and what was John's opinion?
Well-
Does the agent agreement change anything between our decision-making of powers at the inland port or not?
John Cannon Esquire's opinion. Opinion is, it changes absolutely nothing. That's John Cannon Esquire's opinion, period. You ask a direct question, I give you a direct answer.
But he's not the one that's gonna have to defend us.
Yeah, I'm not arguing that or-
They can all have an opinion, but if my, if our county attorney says, yes, okay, I'll do it. He says, no, I don't think it's a good idea, then I won't do it. Plain and simple. And I see a vast difference between local organizations or inland port, you're using it for an example, versus going to a planning and zoning conference in Kearney, Nebraska with two hundred people. And you're sitting sixty feet away from your comrades, your colleagues and you're getting general information.
The only reason I use that as an example is Chris said workshops and that's a workshop. So anyway.
Well, just to use that one for comparison, I, those are glaringly obvious to me. They're two different things.
So here's the, the complicated thing with the inland port. It is the chair that has to sign all of the documents for the agreements between, let's say Tyler helped me with some of the agreements that I've had to sign out there. But I have not sat in the meetings and received the information. So I feel like, and, and you guys, it's been pretty sporadic. And I, for me, sitting in a meeting and receiving the information firsthand is very important for how I absorb information and knowledge. The, the brief feedback that we get during our committee reports doesn't really give me the whole picture of what's going on with the topic. And if the chair's gonna be the one signing that, I feel like the chair should be present and receive that information firsthand.
Well, to that point, that's why we made the inland port committee that we have, the chair or their designee and another commissioner.
Say that again?
This, earlier this year, we went through a change with that committee on the members that would serve on that committee. And the language that was used and agreed upon by this board was that the two people that would serve on that committee would be the chair or somebody that they designate in their stead and another commissioner. That other commissioner this year is me and you had designated Joe to serve on that committee instead of you as the chair.
So then that means that you guys have the authority. So why, why is the chair being asked to sign those documents then?
Because the, the chair on-
Well, you should have stayed on the committee.
I was gonna say-
Okay, I guess I'll go on the committee then.
There you go. That's, that's what I was gonna say. That might be the easiest way.
Solve it right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, that's why it's practical that way.
Okay, with that being said, is there anybody that would like to take one of my other committees? Because if I'm on a committee, I'm on a committee and I have a lot on my plate.
Depends on what committee it is. So we, I can have that discussion later and would be glad to relinquish my honor.
So that still doesn't address, it's just like-
But you're correct. The bigger picture is, it is sort of gray and I, I get the point about a separate. Well, maybe that, maybe that's, maybe Chris answered it. If we have a, except when it comes to planning and zoning, because we have a planning and zoning committee, two members, okay? So when do we say I can come to that planning and zoning meeting and when can I not come to that planning and zoning committee meeting? For example, is it, is it, that, that's what-
Well, Joe, if it's a public forum, like in fact, you know, the information sharing, that's a public forum and to me, that's fairly clear.
Gotcha.
We can go. We can go sit down and listen to it all and leave. I would certainly encourage everybody not to engage in with one another after the fact in the hallway.
Agreed.
But to me, it's so clear, it's, it's not that ambiguous. If it's a local subcommittee on planning and zoning, I shouldn't be there if I'm not on that to create a forum. I shouldn't be engaged in that.
So we could come to the county planning meetings in the evening, all five of us, because that's a public forum.
It's a public forum. I don't, and you're not, I don't see how you're gonna get jammed up over it. But, you know, everybody can have an opinion, but they're not the ones that have to defend you in court.
Oh, I'm, I'm not arguing.
So, you know, you can do whatever you want. County boards do it all.
No, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get a clarification. But so that- But so that gives me a good example. Our planning and zoning meetings are a public forum and we should all five be able to attend them because it is a public forum.
If you're talking about, you know, subcommittee, talking meat and potatoes of how you're gonna meet out regs, I don't, that's pretty clear to me. You can't have three people there.
Okay.
I don't see it as that difficult to define, but that's just me.
Well, I, I do think it has been difficult to define because there have been multiple meetings this year. Let's use the N-Corp meeting as an example.
Was that a public forum?
It was public, it was published. I do not confer with my, with you guys around this table whether you're going to attend a meeting. So I went to the meeting, I sat there, two other commissioners came in. I'm not gonna get up and, and leave a meeting that I am only there to hear firsthand information and receive the information. We didn't sit together, we didn't talk about anything. I feel like that's not a violation. I don't even know if we had much discussion about the context of the meeting afterwards. The other night, I was asked by constituents to attend the city planning and zoning meeting, followed by the city council meeting. I did not even look at the city council's agenda. I had no idea that Chris was on the agenda to present. But when Chris walked in, the first thing he said to me is, do you know if Joe's coming? No, I don't know if Joe's coming. I was asked. So I don't feel like us, three of us showing up in a meeting like that where I was there for a different purpose to receive information. I have no authority or decision-making powers at the planning and zoning for the city or their city council meetings.
So that was a public forum we should have all been able to attend anyway.
That is literally the definition of chance meeting.
Okay. But then why were you concerned whether Joe was gonna be there or not?
Because it, there was the agenda item dealing with their resolution for support of the inland port authorities.
So when Keith Marvin was here earlier this year and had just city planning and zoning people and, and the committees, I mean, that invitation went out to all the commissioners. They could have came at any time, but it wasn't a public forum. It was for, it was for the county and the city to review comp plan and have input. So we were all invited to that. And, and that was not a public forum.
And I'm not saying that we all couldn't have gone.
Well, at least three of us did.
That's what's.
Three of us did.
Yeah.
And I removed myself from the room because two of you were in there getting information on something that we will be voting on. And I waited until Joe left before I went in and got the information.
And, and which workshop was that at?
That was.
That was over at city hall.
Our very early initial draft of.
Gotcha.
A review of the information. So, well, I, I have shared all of the slides. Joe, you were in the, in the joint meeting at NACO with us where the Attorney General very specifically laid out that it is, as long as we're not making decisions and conferring during a meeting, that it's okay to be there. So that's, that's what I'm gonna operate by. Tyler, do we need to, if I'm gonna replace one of the committee members for the inland port so I can go to the meetings and receive the information firsthand and not have it be an issue? What do we need to do?
Just put it on the agenda, do it next week, make the appointment.
They're your appointment, so. It appears the committee member who's being replaced has not been made well aware. So coming back next week is a bit of a novelty, but.
I might go down and skirking, you know, kicking and screaming and.
Might have a chance to reconsider.
All right. I'll take a look at my other committee assignments and see.
So, so I think, so that we can, as I'm understanding, a majority of this group, we, a meeting that is a quote, that the public is invited to, period. Okay? Advertised public's invited to. Your committee meetings, planning and zoning, or our committees, or roads, or whatever, that's, the public's not invited to those and we have two committee members on them. Three committee members don't need to be there and shouldn't be. But if the public is invited or allowed to attend, then that's, that's where we're gonna do this. And that's, I'm okay with that. Let's just have language to that effect. So that we all know.
And, you know, and, and somebody from a private firm inviting us all to a meeting is not the same as, as a public entity publishing a meeting and/or inviting us to attend. That's, I mean, that person doesn't know the statute. They have no idea what constitution or, they just were on the list, so they sent us an invitation. But it's up to us to decide whether it's appropriate or not. And again, you know, county boards aren't perfect and, and at the end of the day, you make your own decision whether you're gonna go or not. If your conscience is clear, then you can defend it. And our attorney can defend it if somebody challenges us down the road on a decision. But I don't think it's that, I don't think it's that hard to figure it out, but.
So what, what is consensus for that language in this document?
Well, I think Joe's hit the key point. If it's a public meeting, public hearing, and we're not weighing in, we're not making decisions, it's the city or the, whomever. I think that's probably solid ground to attend.
I just put that the public's allowed to attend.
Does the public have allowed to attend the N-Corp meetings?
Yeah, the N-Corp meetings were, were published and public invited.
So we got, we got conflicting thoughts here then.
Yes, we do. Same as the inland port meetings. They are public, they are published.
But we don't have anything to do with that report.
Well, if they're applying for a conditional use permit, which is what that meeting was about, we do have authority there. We have to, I feel like we have probably less decision-making when it comes to the inland port than we do with entities that could potentially be having applications for conditional use permits.
So, so my, my point goes back and I think it still stays. When we, when you, Chris, when you were in a committee meeting on planning and zoning, and I think I was probably there inappropriately, but it was a small meeting over there. Or maybe I was on that, I don't know. But anyway, that, that wasn't, that was not addressed as a public meeting because it wasn't advertised.
Right.
Correct.
So, very clear.
Which is why I didn't go.
Right. Public could not attend.
And I don't, just to clarify, I'm not talking about our two commissioner committee meetings. That wasn't ever something I brought into the conversation.
Right.
Jerry and I go to the roads meeting. You guys don't even know when we're having those.
Right, and I don't wanna know.
Right. So that's, I was never going there.
If the public's invited, that, that does not, that is not what we're talking about.
Okay, good.
Correct.
Good.
Okay.
Perfect.
So, let's, let's back that up a bit. Does that mean that at the inland port meeting later this month, that two, three, or five of us can go there because it is a public meeting?
I would say yes, two, three, or five of us could go there. That's my only, well, hold on, stop. Yes? According to what I just wrote, that would be yes.
Exactly.
That would be yes.
Exactly.
Because it is a published meeting, it is a public meeting. Public is allowed to attend. Public is not allowed to attend your roads meeting. Public is not allowed to attend planning and zoning at the, that's not advertised, at the city council meeting, weeds meeting, public is not invited to attend. It's not a public meeting.
And only one of you could come to the visitor meeting with, only one of you could.
That is correct.
And, and if you wanna change and serve on that committee too, I, I don't have any problem. But I'm gonna write this down here and we can vote on that at another. But we, we have to have some direction, otherwise we just keep, this can just keeps getting kicked by the left foot and the right foot and the left foot and the right foot.
That's right. So for me, when, in January, we had this conversation about committees. I, I have a full plate of committees like we all do. I like all of my committees and I'm a very active committee member. I don't have a problem with attending a one-hour inland port meeting so I can be in the know and receive the information firsthand and, and know what they're talking about when Jim Hawkes calls me and says, hey, we're doing the agreement with the transload system. I feel like we're making things more complicated and time-consuming. And so in order to navigate around that, then I was being invited to the executive committee meetings. I just don't see a problem with the chair, who's going to be signing those documents, going to the actual one-hour inland port meeting, hearing the conversations, but not have to do all the other stuff that the committees are doing. You guys do a lot more than just attend the meetings, correct?
From time to time.
Yes. So I.
Such as, like, attending the executive committee meetings.
Yeah. And, and I think you probably do a lot of other work besides that. And I don't necessarily want to have to take on that much more responsibility. You guys have been on the committee pretty consistently from the beginning and I feel like that also adds a lot of value to the work that you're doing. But there's five of us here. It needs to be consensus. I think I've been pretty clear on how I feel.
I'm gonna write this up. If you want me to read this now, I will.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'm gonna work with Tammy and when we get next week or whenever, we take all of our thoughts, the best that I can collect and that I've written down so far. I'd like to put it in a document and have that highlighted or in yellow or something so that we can all look at it and, and, and probably maybe do this again. This might just be the first time around. But, but this is the way I'm going to read it. This is the way I am interpreting this on open meetings. If the public is allowed to attend, the board is allowed to attend, period. Any number from one to five. The wording is gonna be exactly how I'm saying it. Any meeting not open to the public, committee meetings, the board may not have more than two representatives there at one time, period. That defines it.
No, I don't think that's, I don't think that's right. That, 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 we have a role in the inland port. To me, that is a conflict. I'm gonna say it one last time. I don't care if it, there can be 500 attorneys that have an opinion on it. They don't work for us and they, they don't have to go to court to defend us if somebody challenges what we do in district court based on the fact that we violated the open meetings act. So if I'm gonna ask a question, it's gonna be to our county attorney. And if he says, I don't think you should do it, I'm not gonna do it. If he says, I don't see a problem with it, then I may do it. May or may not do it. It's as simple as that.
That's fine.
Yep.
Yeah, it is fine.
That's fine, that's, that's your thing.
It is my opinion.
So, that's good.
It's not gonna change, so.
Yep.
No big deal. Let's move on.
I, I approve of how Joe has it.
I don't care if we approve or not. I mean, honestly, I don't mean to be rude, but we're just going in circles and getting.
I'm okay with how you have it written.
Myself included.
All right. One other thing, I'm not sure I have it found in here. Address is, let's see if I can find it.
And Tammy, you're also taking notes because we're gonna be working together. Chris, you and I. Pick it up.
Yes, I appreciate that. Oh, on page six at the very top. At its first regular meeting each calendar year. If I remember correctly, I don't think we redid our reorganizing the very first meeting of the year.
Make it second, third or fourth, I don't care, but we usually do.
By statute, we can do it anytime in January now. It used to be a very specific date that we can do it anytime now.
Used to be the second meeting. Remember when we first started our reorganization meeting with the second meeting?
But pigeonholing that one beyond the statute is probably onerous as well because you may or may not have the quorum that you think's comfortable.
Right.
So if you just leave it with the statute.
We may have a meeting that occurs before the swearing-in of new board members. I mean, there's.
It just depends on the calendar.
So how do we want that to read?
Just say it reflects the state statute to.
Yeah, but that, I don't wanna say that. Who the hell's gonna know reflects the state statute?
And then further identify what it says.
Oh, yeah, we do, I agree.
No, you say, in, in consistency with the state statute, we will restructure the board before the end of January each year.
Oh, okay, before the end of January. That answers my question. That's, that's good, all right.
Okay, so remove at its first regular meeting.
Okay. Consistent, consistent with state statutes. Thank you, I misunderstood that. Yeah, the January.
Exhibit A, it talks about board of correction meetings.
What page?
Seven.
I probably forgot to delete that.
So let's delete board of corrections.
Where's that at?
Top of page seven, the very last line in the first paragraph.
That might have been one weak link from Landscaster County, I'm not sure.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think so.
Question that I would have, there's language in here. And again, I know that this is a template that we got, language in here regarding staff meetings.
I saw that too.
Need to be open.
Where, where we have.
We don't have staff meetings, we don't have staff other than Tammy, so.
So what page, Chris, or what?
Uh, well, there's a couple of different mentions, starting on page one.
Okay.
I think that all, all references to staff meetings need to be stricken.
Very good.
It's like on page two, the second to the last paragraph, it says, including staff meetings. And then I think it is a couple more places.
Page one, the item, section two, last sentence there.
Oh, yep.
Okay, we'll have a edited version to review again next week. Is that the plan, that's what I'm hearing?
I think that's a good plan, don't you? And, and try to get it out early so that we can look at it during the week and, and maybe highlight the areas that we've changed. Does that make sense?
Perfect.
As far as defining how things are put on the agenda.
Where are we at?
Uh, I'm not really sure.
I, what I tried to do was so that we didn't get, I, I, as I recall, I, I wanted to have, if, if the, the agenda is usually set by the chair. And I don't know if that's what this says. But if somebody else wants to request an agenda item on, I think that I put if two people, is that what it says?
I don't think so.
Okay, because I, I remember writing something specifically. If somebody else, if, if Jerry and Chris want some. If somebody else, if, if Jerry and Chris want something on the agenda, Michaela, your chair, you don't want it on. I think it's important that that still be able to be put on there. So my intent was to write in there and at one time on my drafts here, I have, if two people request a, an agenda item, it shall be placed on the agenda. Now, I meant, that may not have got in there, but I, I can tell you, it's in one of these written scratched documents I got.
I don't know that I read that whole section. It's pretty lengthy. It starts on page two under item three, notice and agendas. Uh, but I know that I've served as a commissioner under each one of you as a chair and every one of you have had a different process for getting stuff on the agenda. I just think it needs to be defined.
Okay, but that's noticeable agendas.
It's the last paragraph on page two.
Deadline for submitting.
Here's what I think it should say. And if I'm wrong, please correct me now. I think it should say that the chair sets the agenda. Okay? Period. Uh, I think it, and, and have language in there, works with the clerk, gets the published dates, gets all that stuff. If there's an item that two board members want on the agenda and they have a right to, um, request that or requisition it or on or something to the clerk and that, that shall appear on the agenda. Firstly, I think that's fair because there may be a conflict sometimes between what, you know, a majority of the board wants and whoever the chair is. And I don't think that's right. I think, that's just my opinion. Give me some feedback, please.
In my- In my opinion, I think any one of us should have the right to put something on the agenda. I don't think it, I don't know that the chair, I mean, the chair approves the agenda, but I would certainly never deny Chris wanting-
So shall we just, shall we just put that, the, the chair approves the agenda before it goes out? Any one member may, and can request it. Should we make it that way and let's just make language and do it? If that's what we want, I have no problem.
I'm okay with that.
I think we as commissioners have that right.
Good.
I agree.
Right.
And I'd be, and I'd be very upset.
So let's just, just, just put it in writing.
Absolutely, as usual, as I would be too.
So, so we'll just, any, any board member may request an, an agenda item.
Yes.
Board, uh, the, the board chair approves the agenda before publishing. Is that fair?
I agree.
You're not gonna allow the clerk to weigh in?
Oh, absolutely.
Well-
But, but she doesn't-
All joking aside, we've had meetings that we had way too many things on the agenda because, and it could've, it wasn't time sensitive. It could've waited. Agreed?
The times, yes.
And I think Becky has been, is pretty comfortable with telling us that or asking, can it wait?
Right, in coordination with the clerk, in coordination with the calendar.
In coordination with the clerk.
Yeah.
Because you, you have to give courtesy to, because that's the key part of the whole thing.
Gotcha.
Well, and it-
Making sure it's functioning properly.
It does say that in here. Yeah.
Does it? All right.
It says the clerk or the clerks designate.
All right. Good enough.
As far as, I mean, especially during election time, I mean, on Fridays, if I haven't heard from you by noon, I, I put it out.
Well, and in here, it says the last time to, there's a deadline for contacting you for agenda items and that's 12 noon on Thursdays. That, an emergency item can be added up to, I think, 24 hours in advance and that is spelled out in here. And I think that's always been the process that we've tried to follow. Some, sometimes I have to apologize to Becky 'cause I don't know what day of the week it is, but. And the last thing, I thought I had it highlighted. Oh, back to page six at the very top where we scratched at its first regular meetings of each calendar year, the board shall select a chair and vice chair. It goes on to say, the chairs shall preside at meetings of the board and the chair and the vice chair shall function as primary points of contact for day-to-day business of the board.
Where did you see this?
Right at the top of page six, right above the number nine review.
Page six.
Gotcha.
I mean, is it necessary to say that the, the chair and the vice chair shall be the primary points of contact for, I mean, shouldn't it be for all business? Day-to-day business. If there's something-
So take out day-to-day, is that what you're saying?
Well, just for all business.
For, for business.
Shouldn't, shouldn't the chair and the vice chair be your primary points of contact?
Yes.
And be apprised of anything that's happening in the county? Not just, and that doesn't mean that other commissioners can't be informed and brought into the conversation as long as it's not one of us doing it.
I'm gonna strike for day-to-day.
Yeah. But I feel like, I mean, I, I have a room full of county officials appointed, hired here who do a really good job of keeping the chair informed if there's something going on in the county. So Brandon has reached out to me multiple times this year to let me know if things going on. Sheriff Kramer has reached out to me multiple times this year to let me know that things are going on. Not because they think I'm smarter or more responsive, it's because I'm the chair. And that's how it should be with anything pertinent that is affecting the county. That's, that's just my opinion. You guys can all chime in.
Sounds like, sounds like a good plan because the chair is ultimately responsible.
I think that's the way it has been, hasn't it?
Uh, I've not had recent experience with that, uh, being followed consistently. I would just assume that that's protocol and standard procedure.
Okay, so we've got that down. Okay.
But I feel like it needs to be defined in there. Tammy, I have some little tiny like, uh, things that partially got removed. Yeah. And some spelling stuff, which I'm not a speller, so I'll just go over those with you. That's everything I had. Does anybody have anything else on the rules? Hearing that sounds like Commissioner Brunns and Commissioner Hughley and Tammy have some work to do.
I wonder if the rules committee along with the executive member from the rules committee sitting at the computer over there might have a short meeting after this meeting. Is that a possibility?
I'll be here.
Okay. Maybe we can just get it hammered out. There's not that much to do and was, okay.
And so with that said, Commissioner Hughley, you'll put it back on the agenda when you're ready.
We'll put it on the agenda for next week.
Okay.
That means it'll be ready.
Okay. Becky's got it down.
I've got it on there.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on.
What'd you say?
Moving on. Uh, let's go to hear concerns from elected officials, department heads or their representatives. We have nothing being indicated. Tyler, uh, we do have a need for a closed session today.
Uh, might be, have some of our people would like one, yes.
Okay, very good. So we, I would seek a motion for us to go into closed session for, to discuss strategy with respect to security personnel or devices.
I'd make that motion that we go into closed session, um, regarding strategy for security personnel or devices and/or devices.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter closed session. Those attending will be Tammy White, Tyler Volkmer, Brad Ward, Booker Boyer, Sheriff Jerome Kramer, Jason Schultz, Brandon Myers, and Lieutenant Dan, are you staying?
Captain.
Oh, sorry. Captain. Captain?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. All right. We will enter closed session for the purpose of deployment of security personnel and devices at 11:12.
Let me do roll call. Hughley?
Oh, sorry. Roll call.
Hughley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Brunns?
Aye.
Uller?
Aye. I will restate the purpose of the closed session is for the deployment of security personnel and devices.
Are we back on?
Make a motion to come into open session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to come into open session. Roll call please. Brens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Uglie.
Aye.
Queens.
Aye.
Lerner. Aye. We will come back into open session at eleven forty-five.
Mics on.
Joe, will you turn on your mic, please? Okay, our last agenda item is Lincoln County budget work session. Becky had provided us all with...
Oh gee. Oh wow, looky here.
It's impressive.
Thank you.
You're orange.
Real quick while we're getting set up with that, I will let everyone know that thanks to Tammy and Becky, who I sat and monitored while they answered all the survey questions for the unfunded and underfunded state mandate survey that had been sent out to all the counties, we successfully got that submitted on Wednesday. So if you have state senators calling you and asking, you can report that Lincoln County did their due diligence and we have submitted the survey. I would personally like to thank Becky and Tammy for their involvement in many years of dealing with all that. It certainly made it easy on my part.
You're trying to keep us organized, aren't you?
Trying.
This is very nice. Thank you.
Yes, I like this. I did legal size this year just to make it a little easier to handle. If you want a bigger one, I'd be happy to do that. But I just thought maybe the legal size would be easier to handle. This is just, like I said, your index, your first request that everybody put in. Jerome did give me, he did not, when he submitted his budget, the union agreement had not been finalized. So he was, he sent me a letter telling me there's some things he already needs to change due to that, plus the dispatch agreement changed, so we'll need to add some to his. This went, the numbers went to Susan Maline last week for her to start working through. The calendar I had done, as Susan Maline was okay with the calendars, I put in there as far as all the dates. I did set the date for the joint public hearing already. So I told other political subdivisions that may or may not have to be part of that, what that date is, so they're aware. The other stuff in there is just some basic budget information, but now that went out for the... The departments telling them what the cost of living in that was. There's a couple, some, the probation and the sheriff had some little memos they'd attached to their budget. And then the other two in there are a letter from the chamber and one from Bridget. Um, I'm hoping, I need to talk to Susan, but I'm hoping she... Of course Julie won't have valuation until August twentieth, official, so she might have it a little bit before. But I'm hoping Susan might have at least some numbers next week for us to know where we're really starting from.
And she would come to a meeting then on...
Uh, I don't think she's gonna come next week. She'll be here the twenty-fifth.
Oh, okay.
She'll write, she'll start with the... Once she knows what the total, the new valuation is and the growth is for sure, then she'll...
Yeah, we really won't have a clear picture on what we need to do until we have that information, so...
Yeah. So this is just for you to maybe start going through it if you have questions.
We are planning on having departments come in and support and defend this year.
Absolutely. I think we've done that the last two years. And I think it's been, I don't know, opinion from the board. Is it necessary to have every department come in? I really don't think so. I think a lot of the departments that submit them, there's really not a lot of things that they have the ability of changing. It is what it is as far as what they submit. But I do think that on our request, we could have departments come in for sure. I will say both of the departments did a very good job last year of turning money back in. So if you'll see, they really, a lot of them turned money back in. For the most part, though, I went through the preliminary documents that I had last week. And I think that we'll be able to say the same thing this year. Most of the departments were pretty good. You got all of them submitted to you by the deadline. Everything's okay. Yeah, yeah. IT was waiting for some things on a phone system that they're, they're thinking's gonna save us. It's, our phone system needs to be replaced. And it's not, the dollar amount was not, it was under twenty thousand. So Dave has been working on that and he'd have to give you more of that. Okay. And that would be actually the building fund, not...
Why is it that it needs replaced?
Tammy, help me out here. It, it's through the cloud now, basically. We get rid of, right, CenturyLink and all those. It's antiquated.
And it needs, we're out of warranties, so we pay for that every year. Upgrade the phone system.
Yeah.
Which is true. Then we at least get that warranty, which we're not.
Just the preliminary conversation that I participated in, it sounds like in the long run, it'll save us money. Yes, it will.
Okay, but I just wanted to understand. I mean, I heard two or three different things. Right now I can use the phone and it works, okay. And so why does it need to be replaced? It'll save money by spending money, is that what we're saying? So because it probably won't save money initially if there's an outlay, it might save money over time.
So we will be able to eliminate some of the service providers that we have. I mean, I know you look at those, I mean, our communication and phone bills is expensive.
Awesome.
We'll be able to get rid of some of those. Cloud-based.
The cloud-based, I mean, yes.
Yes. I thought you'd have to ask Dave. Dave was waiting on a call.
Is it like VoIP or... Voice over internet?
So VoIP is what they installed over at the new probation office, but I'm not sure if that's exactly what this is. I can't remember.
So we think it's a voice over IP system that we're talking about?
And, and a lot of our phones are breaking. They just were not super... I mean, it's probably been more years than you think. I don't know.
No, I, I don't know.
So, I mean, the phones...
But that's a fair question. We're replacing a phone system. First question I would ask, why?
Yeah, you have to ask Dave. I know we have complaints from different offices that they can't hear, or they're crackly, or sometimes they just don't respond.
The allo bill, which is twelve hundred dollars a night.
Just for this building.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Okay, so regarding the budget overall, there's been a lot of significant changes through the legislature. How are, is Susan and you spun up? Because I, it confuses, there's a lot of it that still confuses me, so...
The ironic part for Susan, I do feel bad for her, 'cause like ours is a separate... The, the cities, the, the cities, the counties, you know, we got a one way of doing it. Her other subdivisions are still the old way, like her cemeteries, fires, all that, so she's got two different systems she's gonna have to go. So, yeah, I mean, I think she's got a pretty good handle on it. Quite honestly, I mean, our, when we talked about it, I think her plan is to start off with not taking any exceptions because they're gonna penalize us the next year and also create a sinking fund.
I think we're gonna have to, Bill.
And she'll be able to give us that information upfront? Like in what she was gonna have prepared for us for next week? You said she was...
I don't, I don't know what she'll have for us next week until she gets her stuff from the... I mean, Julie can give her a good estimate, I think, but it won't be anything official till after we get the levy, the valuations. But I think next week she can hopefully have something for us to show, but that's, that was our plan to start off with.
She'll evaluate it by the twentieth, right?
Yes, of August.
That's only nine days from now.
So, and Julie will probably be able to give her a pretty good guess, so I'm hoping she can have something for us for next week. So several of us participated in a webinar on some of the information as far as creating a sinking fund. I reached out to NACO to see if they could help us with a resolution to make that possible and, and we got a lot of good guidance from them on that. We also participated, what was the other call, Becky, that we were on? G O F A, whatever that stands for. Yeah, that has to do with the new budget process. So I have slides, I have notes, but the exceptions part of it, I, I think Susan is spot on with we probably need to start our first year without taking any exceptions because it, it, we can't just think about this year's budget. It, it has ramifications and impact on next year and the next year and the next year, and so... At least your initial first look needs to start without that. I'm not saying we can't do that. We just, 'cause even like the sixty-eight thousand or whatever, last year we had unused authority. If we use that this year, it counts against us next year, which makes no sense.
Yeah.
It doesn't make any sense. If they thought to get that in there, but then they're gonna penalize us for that.
Oh, sorry.
So it's like, that makes no sense. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know that they thought that through how they were gonna, but the other, yeah, it was... I'm hoping once we wait our way through this first year, that maybe there will be some amendments or adjustments made in how we can do things moving forward. 'Cause all our inter-locals are probably, don't make any difference.
Exactly, so to that point, Lane Growth's a big aside and asked if we need to review even having them on, on a lot of different things.
So Lane brought...
Because they have, from their standpoint, they have a lot more accounting that goes into it than the county does in certain aspects, like fuel purchases and things like that. And if it's providing no benefit from a budgetary standpoint, they, I know they would like to get rid of it and whatever we spend.
Lane and Jason reached out to Jerry and I, and I happened to be sitting in Lane's office, at, at least with the fuel agreement. And I brought Tyler into the conversation, so they are looking at that. I think a lot of our inter-locals under the new budgetary process will no longer serve the purpose that they did in the past. So we will have to spend some time examining all of that. 'Cause we do have a lot of inter-locals.
Holy shit, for a reason.
Yeah. The good news is Jason and Lane educated me that the fuel inter-local agreement really wasn't beneficial anyway anymore because we are not able to buy because of fuel volume availability. We haven't been buying that kind of vol, volume lately. And Lane said by eliminating our inter-local agreement, it'll actually save the county that one cent a gallon we were paying to the city for them doing the purchase and handling the paperwork. So not a significant difference, but it just was no longer serving its purpose. So I don't think losing that inter-local is gonna be a big deal. And he didn't think it would have any impact on the inter-locals that we have for, you know, roads where we do maintain some of the cities and they maintain some of ours. It won't impact that, so... Then we might as well get rid of the dollar amount there, though. Yes, yeah, and I forwarded that. Trade checks back and forth in the same amount. That made no sense. I forwarded that to Tyler and I think the county, the city attorney and him were talking and he'll let us know, 'cause I think it's an action we need to take in this room. So, does anybody have anything else that they feel like leads attention as far as the budget goes? No, like I said, I will have changes to the sheriff and jail from what Jerome gave me.
Tip bit of information on budgets, I can tell you that West Central Health decided to get rid of one of their lots because of all the budget money they lost, and it looks like they're gonna get it sold.
Nice.
At a better price than the listing. And that money is unencumbered. It can go back into their general pool. And Megan thinks she can still handle her operations. She's gonna have to cut some personnel in some places, some areas. Still gonna be able to function at some level, but that's another, another impact of funding cuts, so...
Yeah, I think a lot of our nonprofits and, and entities that serve our community are having that same challenge. But the good news is we have a lot of good people in all the right places that will do what they can to do what they can, so...
Can you look at this? Looks pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah, he's got some things he's gonna change on it, but we need one for, more than just Dawson County.
Oh yeah, Logan, Kirsten.
All right. Does anybody have anything else for the good of the county? If not, I...